Waiting on Eric to jump in?
Yep, he went and was going to log on. And that gentleman just left, so um he's gonna go and hop on real quick or attempt to, so it looks like we have somebody else.
Sorry, I got trapped by the back door from a customer. They come to the meeting and it got them all set up for them.
That's okay. Thank you for doing that. We'd like to like to have folks participate. So, Kim, are you City of Gladstone?
I am, sorry.
Okay, no problem. You went away. Okay, I just want to know who's all here, okay? All right, with that then, it is a little bit after six. I'm going to call the meeting to order for the Gladstone City Commission Regular Meeting of March 22nd, 2021. Roll call.
Mayor Thompson.
Excused.
Commissioner Akala.
Excused.
Commissioner Hunter.
I'm here.
Commissioner Mantala.
Here.
Commissioner Stazinski.
Here.
Okay, the first item on the agenda tonight is Public Hearing for Fiscal Year Budget 2021-2022. I'll now open the public hearing. This is a public hearing only to address the budget. We'll have public comment later in the agenda, but right now this is a public hearing to address public comment on the 21-22 budget. Meet the public hearing is now open. If anybody wishes to speak, they may do so.
This is Michael O'Connor. May I speak?
Yes.
The staff have requested a 4.5% increase in the electric rates based on a study which appears to be flawed. The City of Gladstone transferred or more specifically borrowed $310,000 from the Electric Fund. The money was used to pay for trucks for the Public Works Department. The Public Works Department is funded with property tax dollars as its part of the General Fund. The only way funds could have been available to borrow from the Electric Fund would be if the electric rates had been inflated. The same rates which led to this significant surplus are still in effect. Therefore, the rates are too high by the amount borrowed, $310,000, plus the amount which is to be paid back from the General Fund of $30,000 per year. The total the electric rate should be reduced by is $340,000 per year, which is an 8% decrease in rates. If the General Fund could not pay for the trucks in the first place, then can the General Fund pay back the $310,000? As for the overall budget, looking at the most recent audit ending March 30th, 2020, on page 68, revenues total 3.1 million, expenses 4 million. If you go into detail, property taxes don't even cover the cost of public safety. And this is not a one-off. The previous year had a shortfall of 800,000, and the audit report for 2018 had a million-dollar shortfall. Every year, the city is significantly short in general fund revenue. So where do you come up with this extra money each year to balance the books? Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Mr. Commissioner Mantala, wasn't that rate study done under request of Mr. O'Connor?
That rate study was, yes, Commissioner Hunter is correct. That rate study was done under a settlement in the legal action that Mr. O'Connor brought against the city as part of the settlement agreement. That study was agreed upon by both parties and the outcome of that rate study was looked at and agreed upon by both parties that that entity would produce that and the city would move forward with their recommendations, which we did. So that rate increase is due to the rate study that Mr. O'Connor requested.
And wasn't that also the company that was suggested upon because it was an independent company? And that same company was the one who said that our rates were actually much lower, and then there was a recommendation to increase it even more so? And I think the commission decided not to increase as much as is being explained that we should increase it?
That is also correct, that.
Okay, I just want to make sure the facts are straight as opposed to what was just explained.
That company was agreed to mutually in the settlement agreement that that entity would, that third-party entity would be used for the study. They did have some rate increase suggestions in the study and suggested that we would, to bring things in line quicker, we could even and probably should have raised the rates even more drastically, but we chose not to.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we had the correct facts. I appreciate that.
No, thank you for bringing that forward, and that is, that is, everything you said is, is, is correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, with the public hearing for the 21-22 budget is still open. I know there was some folks that were looking to call in. The city manager was getting them set up. Is, do you know if they are, is that what they wanted to speak to, Eric?
I'm not, I'm not sure. He was going to go home and he just sounded like he just wanted to participate in the meeting.
Okay, okay. All right, I'm just gonna, just gonna leave it, I'm just gonna wait like maybe another minute or two to give that person maybe a chance to do it and if they wanted to dial in, I see. Let me see. What do we have on participants?
Well, this is Michael O'Connor. Can, again, can I jump in?
We're gonna wait, we're gonna give everybody a chance to speak who hasn't spoken yet.
Very good.
All right. Well, I don't think that, I don't know if that person's gonna get, get online here. I've waited about two minutes for him here, so we're gonna keep things moving along, and if they do jump in during public comment, they can also address that also. So Mr. O'Connor, did you want to make one brief comment?
Yes, I just wanted to make the comment that irregardless of what the study says, the facts are that there was extra money available in the Electric Fund that was able to be transferred or borrowed to the General Fund. So it might be the study says to do whatever, but the facts are the facts. There was more money in the Electric Fund than what was needed, and it was able to be borrowed. I mean, I'm not sure how.
It sounds like, again, it sounds like, again, that the city staff, city manager, and the commission prior to Mr. O'Connor's term in office was, is now quite frugal and able to utilize funding that's afforded to us in a lawful, in a in appropriate manner. So I'm still not quite sure what the concern is.
My concern? The concern is that the electric rate should be fair and equitable and reflect the cost of the service, which means if there's a surplus, it should go back to the people that are paying the electric bills. Would you not agree on that?
The study showed that the surplus was not adequate to maintain the asset if a major repair or replacement of portions or all of that asset needed to be replaced due to an emergency or some other major problem. So actually, the rate increase was suggested to bring it back in line, so we are not in a financially strapped position, which they suggested we are not at that point right now, but we are, could be close to it, very close to it in the future, and we don't want that to be the case. And so we took the appropriate steps to properly fund that that enterprise fund.
So is there a shortfall now that we were not, we would not be able to restore a transformer if it failed?
No, that's, no, that's not the case. But as, as things age and move forward, that things need to be replaced, and in five, 10-year budget plans, that things need to be addressed, and with the rejected, the study was very well done and very in-depth, and that, that was their professional and very well-presented suggestion, and we followed through with it. We took them up on that to keep things in a fiscally sound position moving forward for the future. So that's where we are with that. So if there's no other comments by anyone else for the public hearing?
The electric portion of the rate study was done by the contractor that was chosen, and it was also done by a contractor and WPPI. So there was two rate studies done on electric, and they pretty much mirrored each other without looking at each other's data when they were doing the rate studies.
I was, I was very impressed and felt very confident in the thoroughness of the study and how detailed they dug down into the usage data and the, the condition of the assets and the outlook for it in the future. So it was very well done and very well presented. So it wasn't something that I think that any of the commissioners thought was lacking. So. All right. With that, then, I'm going to close the public hearing on the 21-22 budget. We are now looking for, if I'm correct, Kim, we're gonna need a roll call vote on this, correct?
Yes, we'd need a motion and.
A motion and.
You don't have to do a roll call, but I certainly can.
Okay, I wasn't sure. I couldn't remember on the.
It'll be the next meeting we do the appropriation ordinance that required.
Right, that's where we actually appropriate the village, correct?
Right.
Right, okay. All right. So we're looking for a motion to approve the budget.
I'll make a motion to approve the budget as presented.
We'll support.
All right, we have motion and support. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on now to general public comment. This is for anybody who'd wish to comment on anything on the agenda or not on the agenda. At this time, you can speak to that. Just looking at our participant list here to see if we have anybody. I don't believe there is anybody right now. Don't see anybody calling in. Is that correct, Kim?
Nope, I don't see anybody else other than who has been on the line.
Okay. All right, with that, then, we're gonna move on from public comment to the consent agenda. There's almost half the alphabet on there under the consent agenda, so I'm gonna let everybody read that, but those are. Is there any discussion on any items under the consent agenda, or is there a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
I'll support.
All right, we have motion and support for the consent agenda. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? All right, moving on then. No one finished business. Moving on to new business. Item A, Advanced Metering Infrastructure Presentation with Mr. Phil Hanson from WPPI. I believe Mr. Hanson is with us.
Yes, hello, everyone.
Good evening.
Are you able to see my screen? Do you see the PowerPoint?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. So here tonight to talk to you a little bit about advanced metering, answer any questions you have, and also talk about how it ties into WPPI and the services that we offer. I know Gladstone's using a lot of our services today that tie in nicely with advanced metering, so I want to walk through that and then answer any questions you have. As I'm flipping through these slides, I have a couple here. Shouldn't take too long. Feel free to jump in, ask any questions as we go. You know, so the basics, I think you've seen some presentations on advanced metering already, but the real basics are that you have your AMI meter. It's basically a little computer now instead of just a meter that years and years ago was a spinning dial. Now it's a little computer actually can send information out to the collectors, which would be put around town through radio signals. Those collectors connect back to WPPI to a head-end system. That's really the software by the vendor. Honeywell or Elster is one vendor, Census is another. I saw you had a proposal from Tanalis. Those were, are the head-end systems there. When you get the data to the head-end system, it's, it's just that raw data, and then a meter data management system, which is the boxes on the right here, is really what takes that information, puts it into a usable format, and then you can use it for billing and many other things. So on the advanced metering side, WPPI supports Census and Elster. Back in about 2010, 2011, a task force of members looked at many different vendors out there. Ultimately came down to Census and Elster as the two that they had as top picks. And the reason they cut it down to two is it's expensive to maintain the software for these vendors, so they didn't want to have WPPI supporting many of these. They wanted to pick two to give some members some choice, but picked the two that are seen most economical and also reliable. So they picked these two. WPPI hosts that software at our location. We manage the meter read schedules, which is what goes out and reads those meters on a daily or a couple times a day basis. They collect 15-minute or 60-minute interval data from those meters, events and alerts, things like low voltage, high voltage outages. And then we also take care of upgrading that software on a regular basis. The meters and the gatekeepers or the radio collectors out there also require updates at times to take advantage of the latest tech features and technology. So we also take care of those as part of our service. Meter data management system is really where the power comes in. Once that data goes into the meter, made a data management system, something that's available to you under our service. We make sure that data is clean and have a full set of information for that customer for every interval. That system is what controls doing things like remote disconnects and reconnects, so you can log on to there and do that. Provides a lot of reports. I didn't include too many of those, but I have a couple examples coming up on some of the reports that we can do with that, that system. And then it also drives our outage management system. We have what we call an outage management light that can be used by your staff to see outages and actually get text messages if there are outages near, in your area. So with that meter data management system, one of the things is we're able to do is build some tools around that. You know, this is a simple tool we built where members can log on to this site, and it's a transformer loading tool. In the past, you really don't have a good idea. It's very hard to identify if a transformer in your system's overloaded or underutilized. If it's overloaded, it could burn out faster. If it's underutilized, you're paying too much on, for losses on that. It has high loss factor. So here you can enter in, you know, a couple meters. You know, these five or 10 meters are connected to a transformer, and it'll go back through all the data and give you the peak load on that transformer, and how often it hit that peak load in history. So a good way for your staff to see, see those and right-sized transformers. A lot of members I see using this tool when they replace a transformer now to know what size to put in there, make sure it's, it's not too large or too small. On the water side, if you do this, you, staff gets a daily water leak report. When you read once a month, you can be only as recent as telling someone they had a leak a month ago or within the last month. With this, you can identify it within days and tell someone that they have a water leak, really cut down on those large bills and wasting of water. So another report that our members find really valuable. I talked earlier about outage management system. This is what members have access to to log on to, to look at outages. The example here pops up. It shows you the meter number, account number, and the time that outage started. Has your service territory drawn around here? And then through the system, you can click some buttons. You can do a check status, and it'll go over and check to make sure that meter's really out, or if it came back. If it came back, it'll close this. One of the advantages of having these systems all together and at WPPI is we tie this into North Star, your billing system. So every outage that happens, it gets reported from AMI, gets put into North Star. So if a customer calls you, now you can look up that customer and they say, hey, I've had four outages in the last month. What's going on? You can call up North Star. You can verify if that really happened and have that information in front of you, where in the past it really didn't get logged, and you didn't know if it was happening or not. So as I talked about, when I started this, you have a lot of the products you already use from WPPI and our services, and it really all ties together, and that's where this, this gets powerful and also saves a lot of money, because it's expensive to tie systems together and do that integration. The benefit of our service is we're doing this for many members, so we can spread the cost of those integrations over many members. We only pay for those integrations once versus each utility paying for them, you know, all the time. So in the middle of here, we have North Star. That's something you've used since 2012. On the right, going around here clockwise, we have my account. That's the online portal where your customers can log on, pay their bills today, see their monthly usage. InfoSend is the nice bill you send out. It's an outsourced bill print company, so puts it in a nice format, puts some graphs on there and sends that out. By tying that into North Star in my account, you can see that bill right on my account if you're doing electronic billing. So then around the bottom are a couple other services that tie into North Star. Retail billing compliance is a checking service to make sure people are billed on the right rates. Outage management was that screen I showed you earlier. Shared Meter Tech is something that's available if you go with our, our AMI service. Our shared meter techs help install those gatekeepers and make sure that they're put in the right place, so your radio signal, your radio system works correctly. And then meter data management and advanced metering go hand-in-hand on the left. It's part of our service. Once you implement advanced meters to my account site here that your, your customers have access today, just automatically turns that on when the data starts appearing here. So our meter data management system sends all the data to this site, and they can start seeing not only monthly usage, but daily usage, and they can drill down all the way down to 15 minutes if they'd like on here. This example has daily usage with temperature on the graph. Some of the widgets you see in your portal today, kilowatt-hours. Well, right now you see monthly, but here it shows kilowatt-hours latest day. So what would you use yesterday? What'd you use last week? Compare those. You can also set alerts in here to say if I use over X gallons of water, alert me. So it'll keep track of that over time and alert you if you use over a certain amount in a month. So another way to, to get advanced leak detection. Some of our members are implementing full outage management systems and actually have the ability to report outages through this site now, so they can click on this, report an outage. Or if AMI sends in, and if they have an outage, they could text the customer and say, we know about your outage, and we're taking care of it. So that two-way communication gets enabled through those integrations we have between all these different products. Software's only as good as the training you get for it and knowing how to use it. So here's a slide on a little bit of our training. We really focus on training how to use North Star Energy IP. That's the meter data management system. And have a lot of open calls among the members to talk about those systems. If there's things they want to improve in there, really how other members are using the systems and the data they get from those systems to get full advantage of it. I believe a lot of just continuously improving the value you get from that software you have and the information you have, and through this forum, through talking to our support staff and talking to other utilities using that same system, you can really move ahead with that. So that brings us to, you know, who's using the software. We have 40 of our 51 members using North Star today. You're one of those. We have 38 of the 51 using advanced metering. Crystal, up in kind of your area, we have Crystal Falls, Norway and Florence. They all have North Star and advanced metering. The Ghanis has North Star, and they're working on, are considering putting in advanced metering. Mostly utilities we work with have a plan in the next five years or so to move forward with AMI. I believe you have AMR now, a drive-by system. Worked well for many years, but a lot of those are being phased out because the companies are phasing them out. They're not, not making some of the AMR meters anymore, some of the technology. And there's also some costs in keeping those running. Some of the software that they have for those AMR systems is being retired, requiring utilities to make an investment in AMR. And a lot look at it as if I'm going to invest in AMR, I might as well make that jump all the way to the technology that gets me that full two-way communications. So I can take any questions. One thing I didn't touch on is security. I know you had questions on cybersecurity in the past, and you know, are these new meters secure? Can someone disconnect them, hack into them? We take that very seriously, and just like we protect all of our operation power plants, everything else that WPPI has, we do the same with the advanced metering systems. We have a private network that goes from those radios back to WPPI to keep any hacker from being able to get into those systems. At WPPI, we have the AMI systems isolated into their own segment. Very controlled access to those systems, so you can never say never, but it's very unlikely that we could get anyone to hack into those systems. We, we have the best security available protecting those. We have very limited access to any of those systems from outside of WPPI or your member office.
Excuse me, Bill, if I could jump in with a question here, since this is what you're talking about this. Would it be possible for somebody to access the meter so it's reporting incorrectly? I'm thinking under-reporting?
No, it has a lot of tamper flags in it, and if anything really happens to that meter, it reports a tamper back to us. As far as getting into the radio signal, that's all encrypted, so that's encrypted.
That's what I'm thinking of, falsifying a signal, so it's reporting a fault, you know, giving real data, but it's a real signal, but it's giving you
Yeah.
false data.
Nope, that's handled very strictly by the, the radio systems and the meters. Exchanging keys on a regular basis.
Okay.
And making sure it's encrypted. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on AMI?
Bill, Darren Hunter here. Really quick, do you, does this offer our customers the ability to, to pull up, say, like, my dad's in Lower Michigan. He's with Consumers Electric, and when there's a storm that's coming in or has gone through, I can pull up to see if his, if his electrical is out. Just because he's an elderly, you know, my dad's elderly, so we make sure things are appropriately for him. Is that something that this will be able to offer as well? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it gets very close to that, and that's why we call the system that comes along with this outage management light. Most of the AMI meters, well, they try to all report in when there's an outage. You don't get 100% You don't get a hundred percent accuracy, you know, they don't all make that message through the radio system. At once. So we get a good representation of what's out and we can display that for your customers if you do want to put that on a map. But to get full hundred percent coverage, you need something called an outage, a full outage management system. That actually does some prediction. It knows if these twenty meters are out, it really means these forty are out because the fuse is up up line. So you can get close, but it's it's not perfect on this.
So at the very minimum least, it we can see or the customer could see that their power is out. Then they can at least make contact call to find out if they if they have power or not and go from.
Yep, yep, they could see a lot of, it looked like there's a lot of outages in our neighborhood and usually we de. De-identify it. So what you really do see, there's ten in this neighborhood out, you don't go down to the house level because we don't want to keep some privacy in here too.
Sure. Okay, thank you.
Does that that outage management, will that push notifications directly to linemen? So like on a Sunday afternoon, they'll get that notification right away.
Yep, yeah, we, it does do that. Some other communities have. Have had a lot of luck with that on the small outages where you have one or two customers out and maybe it's a vacation home or something. And, you know, they're out, but they're not there. So you can fix this before they even realize it and and get to their home.
Good, thank you.
True.
Another question, I guess this is for Mr. Hanson or Skip also. What what is the projected life of this system? You mentioned that most. Municipalities are moving away from A M R because they're not. Manufacturers aren't supporting that anymore and they're moving to the A M I. Is this A M I or this iteration of A M I, is this something that's going to be supported? At least, I mean, for what we're looking at spending here, is this something that's going to be supported ways into the future or? In five years, it'd be like, well, that's no good anymore. It's something new.
Yeah, it is a big investment and the lifecycle that the manufacturers say are twenty years. So I would anticipate these meters will be supported and running for twenty years. You may not be able to buy that same meter, but the radio systems will be backward compatible to make sure. You can keep reading that meter and using the same functionality.
I guess that that's that's that is my question. I mean, yes, the meter itself might change, but. The infrastructure and the the way the system works is not going to be outdated and.
Yep. Started this, Crystal Falls was one of the first ones out there, two thousand twelve, I believe they put in their system. And at the time we were buying, one of the styles of meters that are called Rex two meters. We've been buying those all the way up until last year. Now we went to a different model called the Rex U, but they both still work with the radio, same radio system.
Where are we in that twenty year lifecycle of that system that you said mentioned two thousand twelve? So are we nine years into that twenty year cycle?
No, they've upgraded the, they've upgraded some of the radio systems since then. If you'd buy today, you'd be using the meters that just came out in the last year or two. Radio systems are fairly new. And the software is really what sometimes drives obsolescence and we've upgraded several times. So. That's one of the things our services, our staff is always looking at upgrades. And we have something in the queue every year to upgrade, so we stay. Up to date and the software vendors know that they have to at least support these meter reads for twenty years. So we haven't had any any issues there.
And how's the the hardware and and so these pretty robust? Have you had any problems with them, like a bad batch or having to replace them? You know, before it's anticipated?
Yeah, I haven't seen many problems. Among the membership, we have about a hundred and fifty thousand meters out there now. I did probably see one problem early on in this process with a batch of a thousand meters or so, but other than that, not not many problems.
Is there, is there a warranty on these or anything?
They do have a warranty, the standard warranties a year and going through W P P I, Elsters. Elster Honeywell, they're the same company really now. They've extended it for W P P I members two years.
Skip, I'm assuming you're in, you're familiar with this and think this is the appropriate route?
Ah, yes, considering the handhelds we use for the A M R right now. They're out of support, those are going to have to be sent in. And that is the cost of right around thirty thousand dollars.
That's the thirty thousand dollar upgrade you refer to in your background report?
Correct.
Okay.
So. I guess if, you know, if you put that thirty thousand into those handhelds to keep the A M R going, you're gonna. Push this A M I back even farther. And you won't have all the benefits from it. And also, I was talking, me and the billing clerk this morning, we. We started talking about disconnect meters and the price you have in front of you. Was for complete residential disconnect meters. Now, we decided we could probably get away with like a hundred, a hundred and twenty of those. And the rest be non disconnect meters. That lowers the price of the entire project by about eighty eight thousand dollars.
Okay, on the electric side. Now I'm looking at the, I guess it'd be page two of the report. The title Gladstone Honeywell A M I project.
Yep.
Which we have four different meter suggestions on there. Is that what I'm looking at? Electric, electric, water, water, electric, water again. I'm just trying to see.
The first ones we're talking about is just electric meters, different styles.
Okay.
And the second is some of the controls and the repeater. And the. Third section there, it says water, that is their meters.
That's their meter, okay.
Yep.
One thing that should be noted to the water fund cost of one ninety six. Six eighty, you left it far right down on the bottom, that would be. Divided amongst water and wastewater.
Okay.
Filted, Crystal Falls have their water meters hooked up?
They do, they've done electric and water.
Was this? Was this, I know we talked a lot, so many had so much budget items, was this in the budget skip?
Yes, it was.
Okay, I thought it sounded familiar, I just. Some of those meetings got long.
I know for the, when you were talking about the the leak. Finding the leaks, especially probably the most common one we get is a running toilet. But again. We don't find it till a month and then the reads come in and. Then Patty goes through all the reads because you're always going to have those people that are on vacation. And then she sends a copy out to to the water department and they go through the list. Just to double check it because you try to protect people from getting a big bill. And so a lot of times it'll be, you know, five weeks, it might be. Five and a half weeks before we get to or get a response from the homeowner and. In the meantime, they can go through. Couple hundred thousand gallons of water.
So. Yeah, it adds up fast if you have a ten fifteen gallon an hour leak, it adds up pretty quick. And I've seen a lot of members have really good success with talking to their customers early and getting those fixed early to avoid those big bills. I think it's really helpful around that. Like I talked about continuous improvement, a thing I want to implement in the next next phase of our my account site. Is automate that so we can tell people that they have a leak just if they're signed up on my account through email. So take that even one step further, reduce your office staff time on that, just email, the system knows it's on a report. We'll warn them in advance that way.
So factoring in the fact that we're looking at thirty thousand dollars anyway. Really looking at spending about a hundred and nine thousand to begin this upgrade plan. But is that about right for this year?
It's even a little less than that if we don't, if we go with. We talked about just getting forty disconnect meters and.
Yeah.
To start, so that lowers it down by about another twenty five thousand dollars for that first year.
You said that was eighty eight thousand that we would save over the over the whole project?
Over five years?
Of non remote disconnect meters.
Actually, it's actually over the first three years, that's when all the electric meters are purchased purchased in the plan.
Okay.
Correct.
Is there any other than the fact of, yeah, that sounds good to save some money always. But is that something? Three, five years down the road, we'd be kicking ourselves saying, boy, we should have spent that extra. You know, thirty three, you know, thirty two thousand every year to have this.
I don't think so, our our, most of our disconnects are. Whether they be in seasonal or in forced turn offs, they're they're at the same location. Every month.
Okay.
And there are some meters that we won't, you know, we won't touch in twenty years. So.
And so to have that that advanced equipment there really isn't necessary.
Right, just to throw a a little opinion in there and I don't make any money from Elster Honeywell selling the meters. You know, I know a lot of communities that have gone all disconnects and one of the benefits is. You're not chasing customers around because a lot of times the disconnects, I don't know exactly the the layout of Gladstone, but a lot of them, they're apartments. There are people that are moving around town and you start running at the billing errors when you start trying to move meters around to follow a person if they don't have disconnects. So some communities have gone all, others that have done it a little different and I know you have a couple of your plan, like a five year plan to roll these out. You could put a disconnect meter in as you disconnect someone. You know, the first time, so you have a pallet or two of disconnect meters. And when you're going to disconnect someone, you go put one in there and then then that's at that house. So that could be part of your rollout plan if you want to cut down the number of disconnects purchased.
Yeah, we would have a little flexibility, you know. If we wanted to do more than we we're even talking, but I don't think we need to do the the hundred percent.
Yeah, you know, maybe thirty percent would really give you good coverage in some of the buildings where you have to disconnect more often.
Great.
Are you thinking the disconnect meters for more for rental units? Is that kind of where you're thinking we need so many but not a hundred percent?
Yeah, places where.
Makes good sense. People are moving in and out.
Yeah.
I I think it's a good, a good plan. This is something I know we talked about years ago and. Maybe a little bit ahead, but it might be the time to do it. So we're looking at doing, moving forward with this now to get it approved and when would we, if this was approved, when would? When would the project start?
Almost immediately, we'd start ordering the equipment.
Okay. I'd make a motion to approve the launch of the A M I project with the. Reduced number of disconnect meters as suggested by the electric department superintendent.
No support.
All right, we have a motion and support. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, that project's moving forward. Thank you, Phil, for the information and. Thanks for the the help in the future. I'm sure you'll be lending us.
Yeah, I look forward to to seeing you guys move forward. Thanks for listening to me tonight. Have a great rest of your meeting.
Thank you. All right, moving on, next item under new business item B, Parks and Recreation Board Appointment, Mr. Jeremy Cook. Jason, you have some info on this for us?
Yeah, if you look at your package, that application form is down, is is on there. Currently, he serves on the board of review right now, so he's he's kind of familiar with the city of Gladstone. He he worked with us at the sports park in Van Cleve Park before, he was in the Air Force for ten years. I've talked to him with him a little bit, he's he's excited about being on the board. He wants to help out Gladstone any way he can and he's a resident here, so. Yeah, so he's a, he seems like a good candidate, the direct board approves him last direct board meeting and. Second for your guys approval.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve Mr. Jeremy Cook to the rec board?
I'll make that motion.
Of support.
All right, we have motion support. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion passes. Thank you to Mr. Jeremy Cook and I'm sure glad to see, so he's taking, putting on another hat there. So two, two things now, Jason, is that correct? Thank him for his service. Next, item C, Parks and Recreation Board reappointment. And I don't know about this one, Jay Bostwick, I don't know.
He's a tough one.
Yeah.
I'm hoping he can bring pizzas to the meetings, but he hasn't, he hasn't brought any pizza yet, so.
I picked a motion to reappoint Mr. Jay Bostwick to the record.
We'll support.
Motion support, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you, Jay, for jumping back on board there. All right, item D, committed fund balance. Eric, you can. Direct us on this one.
Vicky on board, otherwise I can take it.
I just don't have a video because I was not feeling good today, so I wasn't in the office, but.
I didn't even see your name there, I'm sorry.
That's okay. This is something that we do every year before the end of the fiscal year. According to Gas B fifty four, all fund balance amounts that are to be set aside for a specific purpose. Need formal action by the commission to be set aside. Public Safety Equipment Fund has forty seven thousand four hundred seventy nine dollars and twenty eight cents. A public safety fire truck fund eighty five thousand eight hundred forty two dollars and ninety four cents. And Public Works Equipment Fund seventeen thousand two hundred thirty six dollars and eighty eight cents. All of these amounts are dollars that are being set aside for future equipment purchases. Fiscal effect, total committed fund balance is a hundred and fifty thousand five hundred fifty nine dollars and ten cents. And I did include in the packet the spreadsheet that I keep. With the detail. So we're just looking for a recommendation to set aside these fund balances at the end of the fiscal year.
So moved. Okay, was that?
Darren.
Commissioner. Darren, he did, okay, I'm getting confused, got a bad connection here.
You beat me to the punch there, Brett, I was going to make that motion.
Okay, I'm just trying to keep it moving here.
Yeah, I know.
All right. Motion and support, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right, thank you, Vicky, for keeping us lined up with that.
Thank you.
Curtis, item F, Burden's Participation Agreement, I'm assuming this is the same thing we've done before.
You have, you you skipped over.
They skipped over.
Letter E, you skipped over the budget amendment.
Oh, you're right, I did, I'm sorry.
Please don't, please don't skip over that one.
I know, you're right, you're right. Okay, Vicky, I'll let you keep, I'll let your Eric, both of you take that one there. The budget amendment there for twenty twenty one.
It's according to the Public Act six twenty one of nineteen seventy eight. Well, we're required to adopt. Well, we're required to adopt a, a balanced budget, which usually means during the course of the year. When we know things have changed, we'll amend the budget and then. Hopefully, at the end of the year, there's not too much of a change if uh. If you look. The, the fiscal fa- effect. Um, it's, that's sort of worded wrong, the increase to the fund balance. Um, will not, it's not going to be six hundred and eighty-three thousand dollars, but um. The swing of what we had originally budgeted to how the budget year ended was uh. Was a positive six hundred and eighty-three thousand. Our fund balances uh for all the funds added together were. Close to between nine and ten million dollars and uh. So we did net. We are projecting a net positive uh. Uh, amount going to the fund balance. If you look, there's a couple of them that will be taken from fund balance, but as a whole, as the city. We should be putting in uh between one and two hundred thousand to the good. This was a real interesting year with COVID and uh. In the funds that became available to us for COVID relief and uh. How the uh road funding was handled and uh. Several other things during budget year, but if you go through there and if anyone has any problems or has any questions. These were turned in from each of the department heads and uh. So if you. So these are the uh amendments that'll get us as close as we feel the year, at year's end. Uh, get us to a, a balanced budget, including the transfers to and the transfers from fund balance.
There's nothing there that really that sticks out that, to me, that was like way out of whack, so. And with what everything going on last year, basically beginning a year from that, a year ago now. It's amazing that we were, things weren't even more out of line, so. Good job by everybody keeping things moving forward with everything that was pushed through on the state and federal level and. We ended up on the, on a pretty good, pretty good even keel there, so.
The good news is uh, if you remember during the audit, we got um. Scolded by the auditor for not keeping our uh general fund, fund balance. At the uh. Twenty-five to thirty percent of a year's expenses and we did have a significant uh. Increase in the fund balance, so we're getting. Closer to that number and by the end of this year, we should be uh. Back in the good graces of the auditor for how much we have.
Yes, yeah. This year was looking, was looking good and uh. Getting us hit, hitting that goal, so.
Hey Eric, I just, one question and. Uh, maybe it's just the way it's written or it's not supposed to be there, but I know it's in the general fund, we do have a, an increase to fund balance, looks like. You were saying hundred to two hundred thousand, it's like two twenty-seven, three ninety-eight, is that right? What I seen?
Yeah, that would be of the uh line items that were amended. There are some other numbers that are. Um, smaller numbers that are or under and. Might not be amended, so it's not, that's not an exact number. I, when I did the. I checked the math out, I came. I came between a hundred and ninety-seven and a hundred and seven thousand. So again, that's projected, I mean, in two hundred and seven, seven thousand, so it's gonna be right in that. I would say between two hundred and two hundred and twenty-five thousand. Add to the general fund. Fund balance.
Good, thank you. Looks good.
All right, is there a motion to approve the budget amendments for the twenty-twenty-one fiscal year budget?
I'll make that motion.
I'll support.
Yeah, motion and support. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed? Motion carries. All right, thank you for not letting me jump past that, Vicky. Kind of important. All right, now we're on to item F. Murs Participation Agreement Supervisors HCSP.
Well, as, as you know, the, the old time people in the uh. Public Safety Union had uh, that still had healthcare. Post-retirement healthcare, they, they are getting so uh. That's fully buttoned up, so at the end of this contract, we'll be all uh caught up with public safety. Except for two of the public safety officers that are not retirement eligible yet. So this is only being offered to people that um. I did the math and I, I mean, everybody on this list averages about twenty-five, twenty-six. Uh, years of experience, plus or minus, and so with the. The final group that I had to uh negotiate with was the supervisors and there are four supervisors that were hired. Prior to that date and uh. Again, they're offered the same thing that the retirees were offered, the ninety percent lump sum. Seventy percent cash buyout, but um they had agreed to spread in that over the three years. Because it comes out of their budget too and. And uh, so it'd be difficult to. Do it a one-time lump sum, like was done with the retirees and uh. So this, the, we set this up for, they have a four-year contract and uh, so this would be all. Paid out at the end of their contract, so uh, once these two contracts are done. There is uh. Two people left. And uh, that have uh. Worked for the city um that are eligible for this, but they, at this time are not retirement eligible, so. We're um, not doing anything about that. Um, Vicky and I have discussed it and we're looking at uh. The possibility of, of doing one of those uh, of protected funds similar to. Um, what the equipment fund and the fire truck funds to slowly fund it, so the, when those. Two people get to that point, we'd uh have the money set aside for them and be able to fund it. But at this time, because of the way Mers is with their groups, we would have to uh. Need the okay from the commission to create this group. And uh. So there's a participation agreement that needs to be signed.
Are they, Eric, did you say, are they doing the? HCSP or are they doing the cash?
The, the, one of the tough things about Mers is that they all have to do the same thing. And so they got together and agreed.
Okay. Okay, so this, the, e- each one can't do something different. This is a little different when we've had to approve changes for individual employees in the plan.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because this is a, a different animal than uh.
Okay.
After, after these uh, after, after this four-year period, if they want to jump into one of the other groups and. Put a certain amount of their check in, they'd be able to do that.
Okay, so this is just for the um, for the buyout, right?
Yeah.
And so it looks like they're all doing the. The cash, I'm, I'm just trying to reconcile the. Numbers, I see tw- twenty-one thou- okay, I see, twenty-one thousand. The first deposit and then the, each subsequent deposit is twenty-seven.
Yeah, this.
Okay.
Um, this sort of got put on the back burner with all the stuff we had going on this year with, with the projects and.
Yeah.
They were nice enough not to bug me about it, but.
Okay.
Then uh. Vicky started bugging me because it's almost you, year-end for the budget.
Yeah.
Have to do the first uh payment this, before the end of this month. And these uh payments are budgeted in the budget, so.
Okay, so the, the cat, the, that this is all correct in the budget that we just approved tonight?
Yes.
Okay.
I'll make the motion to approve the Murs Healthcare Savings Program Participation Agreement for the four supervisors hired. Prior to three thirty-one, two thousand eight, unauthorized manager Buckman to sign the agreement.
I'll support. Do you want to, do you want that one, Greg?
It doesn't matter to me.
Okay.
All yours.
Motion by Commissioner Hunter, support from Commissioner Stazinski. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries, okay, moving on. Murs Participation Agreement, Public Safety Employee Contribution.
Yes, this is one of our. Older public safety guys, I can say that about them and uh. Getting up there, but he's, he's also, um, he has decided he wants to put more money, more of his paycheck in there. It is a, it's a good program because it's uh tax-free. And it goes into the fund and when you use it. Um, you get a medical card to pay for your uh co-pays and prescriptions. Once you retire, it's tax-free. There also, so it's one of those rare things where it's actually tax-free money, so. And uh, he would like to put more of his uh, his own money into his uh Murs Savings Account. And in doing so, he has to change his group. It's just basically changing how much he's putting in, but you have to go, jump through the Murs hoops of uh.
These are the ones we've done before, correct?
Getting one of, getting rid of one group and creating.
Yes, when they want to change the amount, these, we've done like several of these already.
Yes.
That this, okay, this is the one I was familiar with. I'd make a motion to approve the Murs Healthcare Savings Program Participation Agreement for. Public Safety Employee and Authorized Manager to sign the agreement.
I'll support.
Motion and support. Any further discussion?
There's no fiscal effect to the city, but there actually is because we save on uh.
Right.
On the taxes.
It's actually saving us some money and the employees some money, so it's a win-win. These are good deals, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? All right, motion passes. Next on the agenda, item H, Parks and Rec Rental Facility Agreements Reservation Form and Rules for Sports Park Facility. Take it away, Jason.
All right, um, so there's a few different things that uh I was looking for you guys approval on uh this evening. The biggest one is the uh reservation application. Uh, we haven't had one before. As long as I've been here, um, and it's just because this, this is the way to uh just track and just make sure people who are renting the facilities. Are uh, um, we get their signature, we get their information, we could, we could document it, we can, we can put it in a, in a binder. And we just have uh um evidence, um, proof that they, that shows that they read the agreements and the information. Uh, at the uh different rental facilities. And then the uh, the other uh. The uh, the rules um in the facility agreements are just basically uh information. About the different uh rental facilities that we will have posted on the, the website. So they can go on the city's website, look at the rules, the information, uh, they kind of know uh the setup down there. Um, they, they know when quiet time is, you know what they gotta do as far as when they clean up. And they, they, they know what we expect out of them, so um, it's one of the things, one of the things that uh helps us um be a little more efficient and. Doesn't uh. Um, context where the questions that they have, so they could, they don't have to contact us, they can just go online and like, look at it for themselves, so.
So you said you've had these forms, you're just an, an update?
Um, no, uh, we, we've had the sports park rules for banquet before. Um, but, but we have not had the rental agreement information sheets at all, or the reservation applications in the past, so these are all new. The, the biggest change, I guess, um, would be for the reservation application is we, we require, before we had a fifty-dollar non-referral deposit. Um, which we kind of been burning in the past, uh, you know, they, they've broken glass and doors, windows, uh. Kind of um messed up things, we had, had excessive cleaning fees and stuff like that, so uh, we, we increased the rental. Uh, the security deposit for the weekend rentals um. From fifty dollars to, to, to fifty dollars, to, to two hundred fifty dollars. Um, and then for the weekday rental, our security deposit, uh, we require one hundred dollars, so. Um, just because on the weekends, it gets a little more, that's when weddings and receptions are, are happening, um, so we're. Kind of busier than that time, so. And the rec board approved this, we went through this for, for a few months and then uh. So.
Looks, looks really good, I like it. Good job.
And I like your updating some things here and uh, we gotta increase the cost on some things unfortunately to cover. Cover costs and cover operations to keep things. Up to stuff, so.
Well, it, it also, I know you're saying that, but it also gives the city a little bit more of a, a, a bite, so to speak. I mean, fifty dollars is way too low, so I'm glad to see it increased enough where there should, should be some responsibility in how. People are maintaining their parties, you know, keep them a little bit more in order. Money talks. It's a nice job, Jason.
Thank you.
All right, so we're looking for a motion to approve the.
I'll make that a motion, I'll make the motion to approve the facility rental agreements, reservation form. And the sport park, sports park rules along with the increase on the security deposit. I'll support.
All right, we have motion support. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion passes. All right, Chase, looks like you got another one.
Yeah, the last one, uh, the, the campground rates, um, Jay, he's been kind of doing the late work for this and uh. We, we've increased the, we're looking to increase the full-service daily rate by a dollar. And the electric water uh site rate by a dollar, so. Um, it's not much of an increase at all, it's just our, our highly uh used sites, um, um, the most popular sites down there. Um, and then uh. In the past, we, we've given ten free days uh for a monthly rental. And we, we're looking to uh, quote out of seven free days, so a week, you get a week free if you, if you rent for a month. And then uh, there's been quite a bit of demand, he's, he was saying with the weekly rentals down there too, so. Uh, we just wanted to post the weekly rentals down there, uh, which we haven't done in the past, so just so people, you know, would, they wouldn't ask. Um, what the rates was, with that, there was discount, that type of thing, so um. He, he figures that the, the increase down there for revenue would be about five thousand dollars. By, by doing this, so um, it's, it's not addressing increase, but uh. It's a. It's a little more, so.
I'm all for this, I think I even, I attended a rec board meeting. I think it was maybe two years ago now and suggested this, so I'm glad to see you're moving forward with some increase. I thought this should have been done a while back. We have a great facility that is well-kept up and obviously well-used and enjoyed. Uh, and anytime that, you know, it gets that high usage, you're gonna incur costs in keeping it up to, up to those levels of. Uh, where people want to keep coming, so I think a dollar is nothing. So I'm glad to see you're doing something there and I'm very glad to see that you decreased the free days. At least decreased them. My proposal was to get rid of them altogether, but I'm glad to see that you're getting some more paid days in there, so. I like it.
You know, I, I agree with Commissioner Mantle, I, I like to see this. I would also agree that I, I'd like to see that we don't offer any free days and have it be more of a reduced rate. So if you have, you're gonna rent for a month, maybe it's a ten percent discount, something to that regard. But that's, that's just me. I'm not real big on free things when we're dealing with taxpayers, city, city property and so on. But I like the fact, like Commissioner Mantle said, Jason, I like the fact that we do see some increase and some decrease in the free days and an increase in revenue so that money can be put back into the campground. I know it's a hot commodity, especially this past year when there wasn't supposed to be a lot of traveling throughout the state. And our campground was, well, when it could be used, was able to be utilized, so. Nice job on getting this stuff together.
Yeah, and as far as the seven free days, it's one of those things where like, there's a lot of campgrounds around the area who do that. Yeah. Jay, Jay's been down there forever and he knows a lot of people stay down there, so he's, he's kind of leery about raising the race to begin with just because he gets on, he's the one that gets on the flag, but yeah, I, I, I understand, definitely understand raising the race because it is a popular campground and I mean, it's in the middle of nowhere, you know, and people love going there. So, and we see the same people over and over every year, so.
No, I get it and we want to stay competitive to make sure we have our people coming in, our campground is full, so I get it.
One thing, Jason, on your last page, your title proposed twenty twenty one rates, under, on the bottom there, it's that those are the current rates? And the top, in the top are the new rates?
Proposed, yeah, yeah, the current, currently, currently we charge those, those rates down there per
Okay, I was just saying, because you didn't have current weekly or monthly.
Yeah, before, I never put, I didn't put monthly down there, but, but if you just times by twenty days, that's our monthly rent for the rental for that month, each for each of those sites and then
You can't do a monthly tent rental?
Well,
I don't know, I mean, I didn't know people
So, so, and, and I talked to Jay about this too, because we, we've had tenders down there, stay for long term and it doesn't really bring in the best
Gotcha, gotcha. You want a little more turnover on those sites, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, very good. All right. I'd make a motion to increase the, or to approve the rate, proposed twenty twenty one rates for the campground as presented.
Support.
All right, motion support, any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion passes, thank you, Jason.
Yep, thank you.
All right, moving on, city managers' report.
I'm sorry, missed the last meeting, but the way flights get jerked around now when you go to the airport. It was when I got home, the meeting was just ending. But had a great family vacation out in Colorado. Came back and Rodney and I have been, had a couple of Zoom meetings and personal meetings with C two A E. We're getting that close on the draft project plan for the wastewater plant. They, they sent over hard copies for all the commissioners. If, if you want to stop in, Kim has those somewhere. And they also have it available on a, a share file on their site, which I will forward to each of the commissioners. And what this is, is the draft plan, they send the draft, they sent the draft to Rodney and I ahead of time and we went over the draft one and made sure everybody was on the same page. And then we sent it to the DEQ. Valerie at the DEQ, she's been doing these projects for as long as I can remember. And so she's going over it and we'll have a copy for the commission to go over. They have any questions or thoughts or ideas on how the project could be improved? So I will get those, that inform, the, the file share information out to you tomorrow. And then as far as picking up your hard copy, that's, they're here in your mailbox at City Hall. So you attended the DDA meeting last week. Met with Brett Navy and we went over and to figure out what W P P I money for the grants. And that W P P I awards us each year and the scholarships for the students. Figured out how we can do that and in a little bit more than timely manner. It seems like every year we get down to the end of the budget year and we're grabbing at straws or looking for projects. So we're gonna do this year a lot, a lot more scheduled. And Renee and I met via Zoom with Northern Initiatives, which is the the company that handles our revolving loan fund. Very important to the, to the IDC. Learned to learn quite a bit of how much of the Gladstone money is left. And once that money gets used up, we, it's thrown into a bigger pool of which there's a lot more money available. And got to meet our new rep. And it's always been sort of a foggy area, even with the EDC, it's this, you know, they used to do the revolving loan funds and now that's handled by outside company. But I feel a lot more comfortable knowing that if we need money, we should be able to get it. I included in your packet a MISTA brochure that came out from our our, and we are M M E A members and some money that's available from the Michigan State Housing Development Authority. MISTA, it's COVID emergency money. And we're gonna put this on our website and post it on Facebook for any of our customers out there that have have been affected by COVID and are having problems paying their rent and or their utilities. It's a pretty good deal, they, they'll pay up to twelve months of rent or back rent and up to twenty five thousand dollars in utility bills for a family of five. So if anyone has any questions, I will be posting the information. We will be posting the information and it's, it's one of those things where you have to contact the state and they will help get you set up. And that is all I have.
All right, thanks, Eric, glad you had, made it back safe and glad that sounded like you got busy and right back at it, so thank you. City Commissioning Committee reports. Board and Commission reports. City Commissioner comments, Commissioner Stazinski?
Uh, I have no comments this evening, thank you.
Commissioner Hunter?
I always have a couple.
That's why I left you for last.
I'll make it quick because Michigan's on right now and they're the last Big Ten team in the tournament.
No, what happened to Michigan State?
Well, I think they bowed out in the buy-in game.
We like, we like to take a year off every
Oh, okay, okay.
So the bottom feeders can feel important.
Couple of things, one, just so everybody knows, the nine one one project, the eight hundred megahertz that I had talked about probably about a year ago now, is still, is still going forward. The radios, I think I already approached this before and explained the radios are here. We're going through a templating phase, meaning putting a template together for all the different, they call them talk groups now instead of channels. So we have about two dozen talk groups that are going to be afforded to the first responders in our county. So that project is still moving forward. The reason I bring it up is because last, the last time I asked for a resolution from the commissioners to, you know, in support of that nine one one fee surcharge that the FCC is trying to change. Second thing, some of you may know, I have accepted a job with M M R M A. And my regular duties as a public safety captain will be done on July the nineteenth. I will be starting my new position on July twentieth. So with that being said, being a employee of M M R M A and Gladstone being a member of M M R M A, I'm, I will have to look at stepping down as a city commissioner. And I think we'll have some discussion as to when that will be, but my new job starts and it's a bittersweet, I'm looking forward to it, but it also is twenty nine years of a career coming to an end, that's about the only thing you know. So fortunately, with M M R M A, I'll be in the discipline of law enforcement and some generalist as well, because I will be the only U P representative. So I still look forward to working with most of you and it's been enjoyable and being on the commission again and trust me, my voice will still be out there for other people to hear. So that way the true facts can get out there instead of always throwing mud to see if it sticks. And hopefully I could be a bigger voice, so I don't bring too much attention to the commission as a private citizen. That's all I have.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Hunter, and I'm, I'm sure as the only U P voice on there, you'll also be one of the loudest.
I, I'm not sure if that's a compliment or not, but I, I'll take it as
We're glad you, we're glad you're there, you represent us well.
Thank you.
I don't have any, anything else tonight, so moving on to City Clerk, Kim, you have anything?
So I have a couple of things. The first one, when we were doing roll call, I forgot to ask just to verify, which is a requirement of the open meeting since we're virtual, that all the commissioners are attending virtually in Gladstone, Michigan. If you could verify that by yes.
Yes, I am.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you, so I'll include that in the record. Second, along with the Open Meetings Act, so coming up here, we have as far as continuing virtual or going back to in person. The emergency order through the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services does go till April nineteenth, obviously, you know, are they going to extend it, are they not? That limits in person at non-residential venues to twenty five people gathering for meetings. So that falls under that category and that goes until April nineteenth. But the Open Meetings Act, which was amended through Public Act two fifty four of twenty twenty to address the pandemic and the virtual, allowing for a virtual meeting, that ends April first. Unless there is like another statewide that is, that is passed to extend it even further, then we'd be okay. If you, you know, if communities wanted to continue that way. Otherwise, the local entity would have to pass a state of emergency through their local charter to continue with the virtual meetings. So like I said, we're kind of in a holding thing. If the state comes out and extends that past April nineteenth and then can fall under that with the Open Meetings Act to be in compliance. Otherwise, if locally, we feel if we're ready to go back to in person, we can do that with twenty five people, the maximum, for our next meeting at least. If the state doesn't continue on or if they lift the requirements, obviously, then that's, that's great then. But otherwise, for our next meeting, which is April twelfth, in person would be limited to twenty five people. So kind of waiting to see what, what the state does. But I think, I know the mayor's not here this evening, but when I had talked to him previously about it, you know, saying finish out March with the Zoom meetings and then looking to go back in person in April. So I think that's the way we're leading, but it will depend on what gets passed here with the state. So just wanted to update you on that for the status. And then the only other thing is I will be taking some vacation time next week with spring break and, and that, so. Unfortunately, not going anywhere nice, just staying home. So
Well, the weather's been pretty nice lately, I hope it'll continue for your week off here and you can enjoy a beautiful spring, U P spring.
Yes, thank you, and that's all I have.
Thank you. We have no, no closed sessions and with that, then I do see we have one, one face that kind of popped in here late, so I'm gonna kind of circle back just to public comment, if there's anybody down in attendance, I know this is the new, the online meetings are a different procedure and getting online is sometimes a little bit difficult. So if there's anybody who would want to make a public comment at this time, I would reopen the public comment section at this time. Okay, all right, so with that, then we stand adjourned. Thank you all and have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.